I'd like to welcome you to this April fifteenth, twenty twenty, emergency meeting, remote meeting. Before we begin the meeting, I need to read a statement detailing about how the meeting will proceed. So bear with me, it's a fairly lengthy statement. As Chair of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board, and due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number Twelve pursuant to Executive Order Twenty Twenty hyphen zero four, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note, there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we are: A) Providing public access to the meeting by telephone, with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are utilizing Microsoft Teams for this electronic meeting. All members of the school board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone number. That number is one six oh three seven six six five six four six, with an ID code four six one three six two hashtag, or by clicking on the following website address, http slash slash www dot o r c s d dot org slash stream. B) Providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting using Microsoft Team or telephonic. Instructions have been provided, have also been provided on the website of the OR CSD, which has been extended for October fifteenth, twenty twenty. C) Providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting, if there is any problems with access. If anybody has a problem, please call six eight two eight zero four three oh two, or email at orcstd at orcstd dot com. D) Attending the meeting, the public is unable to access the meeting. The public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during the meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Start the meeting by taking the roll call attendance, stick to their presence, please state whether there is anyone in the room that you, with you during this meeting, which is required by right to know law. So.
Tom?
Yes?
Could you speak into your microphone? It was going in and out. It might be helpful for those of us who aren't speaking to hit our mute button so background noise doesn't interfere with the speaker.
Okay, is this better? Okay, we'll do a roll call. Denise Day?
Present, and there is no one else in the room.
Alan Holland?
I'm present, and no one's in the room.
Dan Klein?
Present, and I'm here with a cat.
Okay. Francis Narrows?
Present, nobody else in the room.
Kenneth Rottner?
I'm here, and I'm alone.
Michael Williams?
I'm present, and I'm alone also.
I'm Thomas Nukirk, I'm present, and I'm alone. Okay, move to the order of business. The first order of business is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Yeah.
By Denise? Denise?
Yes.
Your second?
My second.
Second by Brian. A roll call vote. Denise Day?
Yes.
Alan Holland?
Yes.
Dan Klein?
Danny, you did?
Yes.
Brian Sisneros?
Yes.
Kenneth Rottner?
Yes.
Michael Williams?
Yes.
Thomas Nukirk, yes. So the agenda is approved by a seven zero vote. Public comment? Now, I don't know, Dr. Morse, if you have those?
I do, Tom. We have several public comments tonight. The first one is from Dean Rubin, and he is sharing with the board that he's especially thankful for the meal distribution program. It occurs to me if children need meals on school days, there's probably a need for additional meals for other household members, and on non-school days. I was wondering if it was possible to go beyond the federal subsidies and use local resources to provide additional meals. I personally would be willing to donate, as I'm sure others would. Perhaps there's some unspent money in the budget due to empty dark buildings. Perhaps N sixty-eight of hunger, Oyster River could be involved as well. I'm also still interested in the new middle school bond rate, and any middle school updates. So that was from Dean. The second public comment is from Brenda Warden. She greets the board and is requesting that her comments be read. I would like to publicly commend Doris Demers and her associated staff for their tireless and incredible work over the last four weeks. They are behind-the-scenes miracle workers, providing a service to our community that has proven invaluable during this time. We are all facing considerable uncertainty navigating the unknown. The work they are doing delivering meals to hundreds in our district provides an unspoken stability that far exceeds the food. I ask the superintendent and board strongly consider providing at one time bonus to Doris, as well as the support staff who work incredibly hard to provide this important service to those in the district. This would allow our sincere appreciation for their hard work, their dedication, and their willingness to steadily provide an essential service at a time where the high risk, at a time of high risk, and they still soldier on. Additionally, I would ask that you consider a temporary increase in their hourly pay that would recognize their sustained efforts and compensate them for their risk, a hazard pay if you will, until such time as the stay-at-home order is lifted. That was Brenda Warden. This next one is from Karen Nealan. I responded to the grading survey and shared my comments with Ms. Filippone. I wanted to forward this to you in advance of tonight's school board meeting. I read a summary of the grading plan on Facebook, and it was mentioned the students would have a choice to receive a grade of pass/fail. Is this being considered? I agree, it is a better option than forcing all students to receive pass/fail. Please see my forwarded email below and feel free to respond here or my cellphone if you have questions. And that email was sent to the board by Wendy. The third public comment is from Allison Jumper, who is a parent. Our family wants to thank you all for what you have done to help our children continue to learn and progress in their curricula during very difficult educational circumstances. The teachers of this district have been working tirelessly to keep our children both learning and happy under the limitations of remote learning, two very critical components to maintain for the young and developing brains. For this, we are endlessly grateful. We have three children in the district, a kindergarten, a second grader, and a fourth grader. We can personally attest to the extraordinary efforts of Jessica Raspa, Molly Jones, and Matthew Van Leddy, who have been delivering to us on a daily basis both wonderful and thorough content. Our family is so appreciative that our children have access to these consummate professionals in our school district, professionals who clearly understand the critical nature of both continuing to deliver strong content and continuing new learning for our children. We are grateful for this because our children won't get this developmental timeframe back in their lives. We feel extremely fortunate to be in this school district, as we understand that this scenario is not the case for many other children across the United States at this time. In regards to tonight's decision on finalizing the date of the last day of school, we would like to contribute to the following. Our kindergarteners are among the most vulnerable to negative impact from missing school and the switch to remote learning. Research shows that kindergarten kids are at high risk for failing, falling behind when they miss long periods of school. Here is an excerpt from page three of Present, Engaged, and Accounted For: The Critical Importance of Addressing Chronic Absence in Early Grades. And she just references a text and PDF that illustrates the reason for her concern. Common sense and research suggests that being in school consistently is important to ensuring children gain a strong foundation for subsequent learning. Research shows that children, regardless of gender, socioeconomic status, authenticity, lose out when they are chronically absent. That is, they miss nearly a month of school or more over the course of a year. Children chronically absent in kindergarten show lower levels of achievement in math, reading, general knowledge, and during this first grade. So in terms of her email, there's just another paragraph, so I'll go through and finish it, because I know there's a time limit. Going to school regularly in the early years is especially critical for children from families living in poverty who are less likely to have the resources to help children make up for lost time in the classroom. Among poor children, chronic absence in kindergarten predicts the lowest levels of educational achievement at the end of fifth grade. Please allow our youngsters a time on learning that was previously planned for this year by not cutting ten days off the end of our ORCSD school calendar. While our family appreciates the chance to make up missed time on learning by working through April vacation, the four days of time on learning during that break do not make up for the other time of learning days lost during this current school closure. Please keep the last day of school, June twenty-second, in an effort to maximize time on learning for all students in ORCSD, but most especially our youngest students who are among the most at risk of sustained negative impact from COVID-19 closure. And that was Allison Jumper. Anna Sargent also sent a public comment to the board. Anna is a student at the high school, and she addressed it to Wendy, but I know that she was actually addressing it to the school board. I am a junior at ORHS. I have some really strong feelings about the pass/fail grading system. As someone who didn't do very well in the freshman year, but has improved magnificently throughout high school, I was really counting on the extra time to get my GPA up just a little higher before ending, putting in my college applications. The college I'm most interested in at this moment is a medical school that has not started pass/fail and will likely take students with regular grades over pass/fail on their transcript. I understand that some students are really struggling with this online learning setup, so I believe that each individual student should get to choose which grading system to go by so that they can do their own personal best. My family is hosting a foreign exchange student from Spain, and his organization won't accept pass/fail, so would have to be, he'd have to redo part of his school year back in Spain to make up for it. Thank you for listening to my input. And that is the public comment for this evening, Tom.
Thank you, Jim. Moving to the approval of the minutes. Wendy asked that any corrections be sent, and I know both Michael and I thought that the vote on the vice chair was not accurate, and she corrected that. Are there other changes that needed to be made in the minutes?
What was the, what was the change that you were, because it looked, it looked correct to me, so I'm not sure what was changed.
I think you had those votes being four, two, one, and the first vote was two, four, one.
Oh, okay.
Am I, am I right?
Yeah, yeah, okay, yep, yeah, I get it.
Okay.
Yep, good catch.
Were there other changes?
I had also suggested to Wendy that on page six with the bus bids, since there were three bids, that we should clarify in the motion, it was to go with the Thomas bus bid. I don't think it was specific in the motion.
Okay. Other changes? Okay, could I have a motion to approve the minutes with those changes?
I motion to approve the minutes.
My second, my second.
Roll call, Denise Day?
Yes.
Al Holland?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And Tom, yes. So minutes are unanimously approved. Okay, move down to District Reports. Dr. Morse, the new middle school update?
Yes, yeah. So there's been a lot of activity by the architect related to the middle school. We met with a host of professional staff to refine the layouts for their classrooms. So the architect met with the music staff, the art staff, the STEM staff, the world language staff, the library staff, and all four grade levels, representatives for all four grade levels, five, six, seven, and eight. So they have been videoconferencing with these teachers. Jay's been a participant, Todd's been a participant, myself, and so that's going on. Our meeting that we had with the committee focused in on LEED. We spent about an hour and a half on the criteria for LEED. Pretty exhaustive, and some of the LEED goals are easy to achieve, and others would require significant investment of resources that we did not budget. There's no question we'll reach a LEED certification. The question is whether it will be bronze or silver. To push beyond silver would really involve a lot of investment for very little gain. So that conversation was pretty rich. They did a great job of sharing with us the grid that they use and the background information that they have to accomplish in order to get a particular point in a particular area. The major LEED headings are location and transportation, sustainable sites, water efficiency, energy and atmosphere, materials and resources, indoor environmental quality, innovation, and regional priority. So that, the conversation was pretty deep on LEED, and we continue to do the work that we need to do to be ready to build this building. That would be my report, Tom.
Questions about the middle school? Okay, remote learning, Jim?
So, you know, we continue to do, I think, a really great job of providing quality education to our students in a time when we have many, many obstacles. You know, schools are built for intimacy between the teacher, the principal, and the students, and in this environment, of course, that intimacy is pulled away. One of the things that we talked about in our administrative team meeting this week was making sure that we could account for all of the students, making sure that they were participating, and that we had a system in place to make sure that no child was, you know, slipping between the cracks, so to speak. I'm really pleased to say that the administrative team, the principals in particular, had structures in place to ensure that every child is being reached, and that when I asked, had we missed anybody, there were very, very few students that we had to chase after, that the students are really participating in Oyster River at a really great rate. I mean, it's, it's pretty amazing. So I wanted to commend the four principals for putting criteria in place that really assures that our children are being serviced.
Questions? Okay, move it on, our spring coaches?
So, you know, this is a bit unusual. When Suzanne and Andy reached out to me initially, I said, why are we talking about this? And Andy provided you a pretty detailed memo. It turns out that our varsity coaches put in a significant amount of time preseason, and he's documented that for you in terms of the memo. He thinks that it's about one-third preseason, two-thirds in-season, and so I'm making a recommendation tonight that we pay the varsity-level coaches thirty percent of the stipend that we budgeted for the work that they did prior to the start of the season.
I think we've all had a chance to read that. Denise?
There is, there is a mistake under Nick Ricardi. It was listed as five hundred and seventy-two dollars and thirty cents. I believe it's supposed to be fifteen hundred seventy-two dollars and thirty cents, when you look at it in comparison to all the others.
Thank you, Denise.
Other questions about this? We'll need a motion if we're gonna approve.
We need a motion, yeah.
I just was wondering, are there other people who are in similar situations that are getting stipends that have put in time that we might be overlooking, such as yearbook staff, or just other organizations at the school, or other workers at the school that are in similar positions?
Thank you, Kenny, for that, because I did ask Suzanne that very question, and all of our clubs and organizations are continuing to work remotely. So, From Mouth of the River, for example, is published since we went into remote learning, and so the stipended positions for those at the high school would all be paid in full because they continue to work. The only similar position to the varsity coaches is the high school musical, and like the varsity coaches, the two people who are the staff members offering that program have put about thirty percent of the work. So in fairness, Kenny, I think that the high school musical teacher sponsors should also be paid thirty percent, even though the musical didn't happen. They had put a lot of work in prior to us going to remote learning. Everybody else is in a solid place. Everybody else is still working remotely with their clubs and organizations.
So what's the best way to proceed? Should you vote on the coaches first, and then you come in? Because we don't have any numbers for the, for the musical, or should we just include those, you know?
I think it would be safe to include the musical in the, in the, in the motion, because it's not going to be any more than the varsity coach.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve the, the paying the spring varsity coaches thirty percent, thirty-three, thirty, thirty, is it thirty, thirty percent, and the people involved in preparing the musical, thirty percent. Denise?
I'll make a motion to pay the coaches and the people involved in the musical thirty percent of their usual stipend.
And this, I think your motion includes a correction that you mentioned as well.
Yes, yes, yeah, that would be exactly.
Fifteen seventy-two thirty.
Right.
Is there a second?
My second.
Further discussion? Roll call, Denise Day?
Yes.
Al Holland?
Yes.
Dan Klein?
Yes.
Francis Narrows?
Yes.
Kenneth Rottner?
Yes.
Michael Williams?
Yes.
Thomas Nukirk, yes. So the motion passes unanimously. Moving to calendar?
So a lot of activity has happened in surrounding school districts since we opened this conversation on April first. The most recent one was Summersworth. The superintendent from Summersworth sent me an email today saying that they have chosen May twenty-ninth as their end date. The earliest one was Rochester at May fifteenth. Then we go to Barrington at June fourth, Dover, June fifth, and Exeter is June fourth. So, school systems are making a decision for the end of the school year. When we last talked, I had suggested June eighth as the end of the school year, but I, you know, going, since these, Dover in particular and Barrington are districts we usually coordinate with, so if the board is interested in an earlier date, we probably should coordinate with them and go with like June fifth or something. So I leave that conversation to you. It involves forgiving snow days and determining when you want the school year to end, because this is absolutely a board decision, and we'll be glad to contribute to the conversation as, as necessary.
But your recommendation is that we close the school on June fifth, is that correct?
I would recommend that we close on June fifth, based on what's happening in our surrounding districts.
Could you say something about, I mean, I think, about why the earlier date, you know, what, what is the reason why we would want?
So, you know, the feedback from our teaching staff that you've received, and it totally through dozens of emails that are forwarded to you, is the hour, the number of hours that they're putting in, in order to create quality lessons remotely is significant, significant. Their availability to students is much different than a brick-and-mortar availability. They're, they're responding to students in the evenings, sometimes on weekends, and so the, the day, the school day for the teachers is, is much longer. Counselors have expressed concern about the mental stress of remote learning on our students, and I think that's real. Teachers have also, you know, found it very stressful. I've gotten emails from parents that really have concern about how does a teacher judge the amount of work? You know, you could take one eighth-grade student as an example, who I know very well, and he can do his work in about three hours, just shy of three hours, and then, you know, an eighth grader that I also know down the road piece is, is taking six to do the same work. And both of them are very hard-working students, but it's much harder for teachers to judge the impact of, of the learning process remotely and, and coordinate accordingly. So I really feel like the length of the day and the expectation we have on teachers and the, the inequity, if you will, that happens with students, based on the skill sets of their immediate family. I mean, some families, my son would be a good example. He's a musician, he's a mathematician, he's interested in social studies, and so as a parent supporting his child remotely, he can offer pretty much a full curriculum. Other parents have, you know, different skills. Some might favor the arts, some might favor, you know, the sciences, math and sciences. And so children in this, in this particular situation really are being serviced as well as they can by the school system, and as well as they can by their parents and relatives, but the, the issue is, this is an exhausting process on both students and staff, and I think we just need to recognize that.
Questions for Jim?
How important is it to make a decision on this tonight?
Well, I, you know, it's, we can, it's not like if we don't make a decision tonight, it's the end of the world, Michael, but I think that the further we go down, the greater parents want to know when, when the school year is going to go, and our next board meeting isn't until well into May. It's not at the beginning, it's like the sixth, I think. I don't have my calendar in front of me. So I think parents would like to know, I think the staff would like to know, I think the students would like to know. So it's, it's not a imperative in the sense the world stops spinning if we don't make a decision tonight, but I think where other school systems are making these decisions, it just puts increased pressure on, on us to, to do the same.
Denise? I, I think, you know, and I saw, obviously, letters. Some were in favor of going longer. However, I've been following what the governor, you know, has been saying in his, in his news briefs, and it's pretty obvious that it's highly unlikely that we're going to be returning to school, and almost certain that we're going to continue with remote learning for the rest of the school year, and given, you know, what Jim just said and the feedback that I've seen from faculty and from parents. And given, you know, what Jim just said and, and the feedback that I've seen from faculty and from parents, you know, I feel like June fifth is definitely a reasonable compromise. It's not as early as some districts. But I, I do believe that under the situation that we are dealing with, that it is a reasonable end date. And I agree that we should make the decision tonight because teachers need to be able to plan for the quarter ahead. And, you know, obviously, parents want to know. So I, I, I would agree in support with an end date of June fifth.
Other comments? Would somebody be willing to make a motion that we set the last day of school for June fifth?
I'll make a motion for the last day of school to be Friday, June fifth.
By Brian, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Denise. We can continue the discussion. I'd just like to say that I think even under normal circumstances, once you get into June, maintaining kids' attention is difficult. But a lot of times it's done by going outside, you have field days, you have things which of course can't happen now. And I'm concerned that if it was pushed much beyond that, I think that the, the remote learning would just become harder to, to, to maintain, both in terms of teacher stamina, student attention. So I think, I think it'd be good to end at that point.
I, I think, I guess, one question is, what would the impact be on the rest of the staff? I understand, Jim, you shared the teacher perspective, but the, the rest of the staff, what's the impact on them if we make this sort of change? And we, you know, we've added the relearning days and the additional, you know, non, non-learning days, I guess, in, in May to try to space things out. Does that mitigate this and make it easier to go on into June or even a little bit longer? And the reason I'm asking this is that I think most of the feedback we've received is actually towards the direction of we want to continue the school year out to a normal, normal length where possible.
Thank you, Michael. Yes, I am very, I'm always concerned about our hourly people. And what I would do in the circumstances, whatever days they are short, I would build into the calendar, work for them to continue to be able to collect their paycheck. A lot of our hourly people need to work those two weeks in June in order to cover their health insurance. And so, you know, as I've done since this remote learning started, I've been very supportive of our, our hourly employees and making sure that they had quality things to do to support their paycheck. Most recently, we created a, a pretty exhaustive professional development guide for our hourly people so that if they need hours, they can participate in a buffet, if you will, of PD work that will only increase their skills into the future. There's a lot of workshops being presented. For example, AR psychologists for our hourly people, that's just started. And those have been well received. We have tech, technology options in the, in this, in this document we produced. And I really, again, want to take a moment to commend Brian Ryan, our assistant principal at Massway Moheramit, for getting this particular endeavor moving. And Kristen Hughes, who has, who is, who works in our special ed department, who's been supporting our special ed teachers in their technology skills and our support staff. And then our principals who have contributed to it as well. So we, we are having people put in their hours normally. I mean, the parent staff, for example, has been supporting the students that they've been hired to support. But as, as we move forward, I would still want to make sure that we could honor the hourly people for all the effort that they put forward. Felicia Sperry over at Massway has been a real godsend in terms of working with, with the support staff. So there's, there's been a very concerted effort to make sure our support staff got all the hours that they were intended to get, Michael, and, and we've been supporting them in, in that, in that work. And I would want to continue to support them in that work, even if we close a week early or two weeks early. I would want to continue to provide that option to them.
Other questions? So we have a motion and a second, so ready to vote? Denise Day?
Yes.
Val Holland?
Yes.
Dan Klein?
Yes.
Francis Narrows?
Yes.
Kenneth Throtner?
Yes.
Michael Williams?
No.
Thomas Newkirk, yes. So six in favor, one opposed. The motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, grading?
So grading has been, you know, a intense conversation. Suzanne has been a very important factor in, in all of this. She did a survey of her high school parents and students. She did a survey of her faculty. And, you know, the issue came down to, is it an either or? Is it a credit, no credit, pass fail kind of scenario? Or is it a grade scenario? Or is, is, is there a compromise to be made by using both? So she provided you a pretty detailed memo. And so I'm going to invite Suzanne to talk to the grading issue right now. And then at the, at the appropriate moment, I'll make a recommendation.
So the memos that I provided you, the second one was from the tenth. And I have a couple of graphs on there just to show the results of the survey. Really is a third would like to keep it the same, a third would like to move to pass fail, and a third would like, would is comfortable with either scenario. The faculty leaned a little bit more towards the move to pass fail or either way. There were a few faculty that would like to keep it the same. So those were the results of the survey. It really shows that there's, in the total, with all stakeholders, parents, students and faculty, the communities really split. So there were some questions that you had had regarding colleges and universities. And I put some, some language that a few of the universities that we, that our students attend, put some language there that they have shared with us. There was a Niasq conference or online conference that our counselors attended recently. And in speaking with them, they said that the colleges that participated in that all said that they are also in the same boat as we are. And they fully understand the dynamics that we're under and that they would be working with all students. So that, and then I included information about our transcripts. There were some questions about our transcripts and what the transcripts look like for high school students when they leave. We do include quarter grades on our transcripts. So that, that was a question that you had had. And then we have at the end of a course, whether it's a semester-long course or a year-long course, we have a final grade that is also included in the transcript. There were additional questions about, about choice and what, what are other schools doing? There's a variety of different things that other schools are doing. And again, it's difficult to compare just because we all have different grading and reporting systems. And a lot of New Hampshire schools are already full competency-based grading and reporting at the high school level. So it's difficult to compare with our system that we have. So the alternative recommendation below was the choice-based model. And I think the best, really the best way to describe it is, is students would, I, would have the ability to choose pass fail for quarter four. And in that case, they would get the average of the other quarters. Or they would earn the grade for quarter four and then they would have the average of all four quarters.
So essentially Suzanne, you're, you're suggesting the board do a hybrid model.
So that's, that is an option if they would, if that's just based on the survey results of what the community has, how the community has responded. If they, if you decided to go to a hybrid model, that's, that would be the hybrid model that, that's what it would look like.
Suzanne, when would, when would the decision be made about whether a student gets pass fail or the grade?
So we haven't talked about that yet. We haven't talked about the procedural aspects because we're talking about close to five thousand courses for the high school that are currently being taken. It's a variety of year-long and semester-long courses. So that's a, on the back end of things, we would have to figure out how that would work with power school. Chances are, we would have to make the changes after. So teachers would have to be keeping their grade book very similarly to the way that they're keeping it now. And then we would have to make the change after the grades are averaged to whether or not it's a pass fail or it's, it remains the same. And that's because we have to override the grades themselves to be able to do that.
It'll probably be at the end.
It would be, yeah.
So the student, the student decides at the end of the semester, not at the beginning, which way they're going to go?
We would, well, they could decide, they could decide at the beginning of the quarter if they, you know, well, we started, the quarter started today. So they could decide now or, but they, but we wouldn't be able to reflect that in power school until after.
How will the student know which way to go at the end of the quarter? If they decide, I want to do pass fail or I want the grade?
So I, I would think that would be a conversation for the student with the parent and possibly the counselor to make that decision.
I think Brian, once the student has made the decision, they have to do so in writing and it's irrevocable. So if we wait till the end of the quarter, the parent and the student would have to sign off that they're, they, they prefer a, a pass fail option or they prefer the grade option. And that way, you know, two years down the road, there's a record of the decision being made and there's no confusion.
We wouldn't be able to go back. Once a student makes the decision to go pass fail, we wouldn't be able to go back and put a grade in there. That's, that grade would be gone by that point.
So if they choose either pass fail or the grade, is that for all their classes or is for each individual class?
Under this model, it would be per class.
So they'd have to decide six or seven classes, they could all be different?
Correct.
For a student, okay.
That's the only way to do it and be able to do it properly, Brian. Because a student might be doing incredibly successfully in math and prefer the grade and struggling in art and prefer the credit, no credit. It's really a customized approach that, you know, allows the parent and student to make the best decision that advantages them in the given circumstance we're in. One of the things that Suzanne and I talked about was how very short the fourth quarter is compared to the first three quarters. And, you know, that's a factor as well. I don't see that there'd be a giant change in anybody's GPA if they choose grades, quite frankly, because it just doesn't happen that way. Whatever you're going into the fourth quarter with is likely where you end. Unless you're right on the edge and you're able to change a B to an A or a C to a B, it's likely to be very close to what you have going into the quarter.
Well, my only concern was, you know, you said there's five thousand classes and probably, I would say, three, being conservative, three thousand choices for this quarter. That's three thousand choices that have to be made by parents and students. And maybe they want the help of a teacher or whatever. That involves a lot of people and it could be very time-consuming. And I'm just wondering if that's, I mean, that's kind of an astronomical number, three thousand decisions to be made. Some people are going to make an easy decision, some people are not going to make an easy decision. And I'm wondering, you know, if you have to get the teacher involved, now we're tying them up because they can only do a one-on-one. So is that, I mean, is that any thought into that or?
I think the vast majority of the decisions are going to be pretty straightforward, Brian. I don't think that it'll be anywhere close to five thousand discussions. And, and the parents and the students are keeping a pretty meticulous record of where they are at any given moment. So I think that the hard part will be not the teacher keeping a grade. The hard part will be at the back end when we try to enter in what the students and parents have, have chosen. So, you know, based on Suzanne's survey, for example, if it's one-third, one-third and one-third's up, then you're probably looking at, you know, a couple thousand grades out of the five thousand that will require some kind of finesse in the back end. But it's still a lot. I don't want to underestimate what you're saying. But if you're going to go to a personalized, customized approach, that's, that, that will require time.
Val?
So when I think about this, I mean, first of all, the amazing thing about the whole pandemic is that it, it has removed all structure essentially for many people. And so I think maintaining structure and motivation for the last, whatever, at six weeks is really important. And I think, I, I like the idea of grades a lot because I think, I know it's really difficult in online learning where everything's been turned around to have grades. But I think for a lot of our kids, the motivation of grades still exists. I think the hybrid model is, is the way to go because I think there's all groups that when they've moved to the online environment, they're going to have difficulties and there's just a long list of things during the pandemic that can make it difficult for a kid to keep going. So I, I think the hybrid model is, is the way to go. Even more so as you just described it because most kids now are going to be working along and, and trying. They think, you know, you're not going to do the pass fail essentially towards the end. And so the grade becomes the kind of the carrot to make them keep working along and to maintain structure in a structureless environment.
Other comments? Just a clarification, pass fail, I was looking in the, I don't, I don't know how often it's used really, but passing would be a D minus, right?
Be sixty-five, yes.
Okay, so like a D, so so pass fail, just to get, just to pass, oh, you'd have to give this like a D minus in the course and you're passing, right?
Under our current model, yes.
But under, under this, under this semester, that's what it would be, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, the grading structure we would use, Tom, is exactly the same grading structure that we used prior to hitting remote learning.
Denise?
I'd like to make a motion to go with the hybrid model as presented for the fourth quarter grades.
By Denise, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Brian? Kenny?
I'm not really sure how I feel about this. And I read the letters, you know, from some of the students we got and some of the parents that were urging about the grade. And some of the students were kind of talking about they, you know, had been enlightened and all of a sudden now they're on the track to improvement. And they felt that going to pass fail was all of a sudden going to derail their, that improvement they were working on. But when I look at a grade in this environment, it's, we had all this structure in place, you know, going into, you know, January into February. And that was what our coursework was, that was how grades were determined. There was the component of involvement in a class, the discussions that took place. So many aspects went into a grade being formed. And now we're in this kind of helter-skelter world. And we talked before about that, even the equity issue, that we have kids going to so many different environments at home and that there are kids that are probably going to environments that are so well set up for them to do well with incredible parent support, incredible technology, incredible quiet space. And we have kids that are probably in the exact opposite. And I'm trying to get my head behind, how do we equate a grade now with really what a grade was in the first quarter or the second quarter? How do we get behind that issue of equity? And I, you know, I hear the arguments about motivation, but I, I think in this special time, I, I would, I lean more towards pass fail because I think that's really what this model is about, is kind of leaning what you can from education, getting the most out of it you can from your unique environment because everybody's environment is different. And that's kind of where I'm leaning. But as I said, I'm really confused by this and not totally certain.
Well, Kenny, I think you just articulated the conversations that Suzanne and myself and Todd have been having for several weeks. There's, there's definitely an issue here of, of. There's definitely an issue here of, of equity and, you know, I come down on, on the students being able to make a choice in order to. Um, have some control over the balance of that issue. So if you're a student who's. Working at home on remote learning and you're also babysitting three younger siblings because your parent works. Uh, that's not the same environment as a, a student who has, you know, the dedicated space. So, 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 you know, my, my idea is that, you know, equity is, is a, um, it's, it's situational. And that that particular student might be doing great numerically in their grades and want to continue that, but that. Particular student might also have a night job and be struggling to keep up. And a pass fail would provide that particular student with an equitable choice. Um, so I see it as each family trying to make a decision that makes sense to them. Because we don't live in their homes and we don't know. Their personal struggles in terms of keeping a balance and, and course load and other commitments. But a choice in my mind allows them to say, this works for me for this remote learning time period. And so. You know, your argument is, is incredibly valid. It's one that, you know, we've debated back and forth. Um, since we brought the issue up, uh, actually before two weeks ago. And, um, you know, it's, there's. It, 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 it just comes down to, we have to make a decision. And, you know, my, I, I feel strongly the best decision we could make is to let. The families decide, the student decide what works best for them in this environment. So that's where I'm coming from.
Thank you.
Two, two small questions. Um, one is. This is just for the fourth quarter of this year, right? This is, this is a one-time situation.
One time, just this quarter.
Yeah. And, and the second question is, is there a default? Um, so if you don't get a answer from a student, you know, a written response from a student, what do we do? Are we gonna make sure that we follow up until we get an answer or is there a, you know, I, I think it might even make sense to make the pass fail be the default.
I, I would say, you know, that's where Suzanne was talking about building the procedures out to make it, uh, clear that. You know, what, what are the steps you're gonna go through? And if we don't, if we don't get a response from a family, then I think. The pass fail, uh, credit, no credit is, is the, is the fallback. But Suzanne, do you agree with that and not agree with that?
Um, yes, we haven't worked on procedurally what this would look like, but that's definitely, we can do that if that's what the school board would like us to do.
That would make sense, I think. So we have a motion, we have a second. Um, are we ready to vote on this? We're gonna have to decide it tonight, really.
Uh, yeah, so this is definitely one that, that we need to decide tonight because the, um, staff has already started the grading for the fourth quarter.
So. Okay. Denise Day?
Yes.
Al Howland?
Yes.
Dan Klein?
Yes.
Brian Sisteros?
Yes.
Kenneth Rotner?
Yes.
Michael Williams?
Yes.
Thomas Newkirk? Yes, it's unanimous. That's the, the hybrid model's been supported.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Voice River High School Parking Lot Bid?
And so I'll invite Jim Rizicky into the meeting.
Hi, everyone. How are you? Hope you are all well.
You as well.
Thank you. James Rizicky, uh, Facilities Director. I intend to be very brief, but I just wanted to bring before you approval, uh, for the Voice River High School Parking Lot. This is the construction over the existing tennis court and creating 83 parking spaces. Uh, for, um, this summer and deleting the tennis courts. Um, my proposal for my, um. My recommendation for contractor award would be for Jason McKenna and Sons Construction. In the amount of $285,000, $352.85. Uh, there was four bidders that have submitted bids for this project. Um, there was a total of, I believe, seven at the pre-construction. Um, bid to the public on the 26th of March. Um, I believe that we followed all protocols and procedures in the district. Um, policies.
Have you worked with this group before?
No, we haven't actually worked with any of these construction firms, though. Um, some of them are familiar in name to me that have bid before. When we put out a public bid for the Mastway Rain Garden Construction Project several years ago. We haven't done a project of this nature in quite a few years.
All right. Jim, can you, uh, comment on the change that you had to make to the spec in order to bring the bid down?
Absolutely. Um, I knew that was gonna happen. So, um, all of these bids came out, um. Uh, exceeding what we had for our capital improvement budgeted amount. Um, when we put that budgeted amount for capital, uh, projects, um, back in September or October of this year. We just did a, a general, um, um, estimate on how much the parking lot would cost. But since then, um, we decided to look at, um, porous pavement options. And also to, um, deal with the drainage on that and also. Um, the blinking light that we're proposing for in front of the high school, which, uh, I believe is much needed for. Pedestrian traffic to cross the road. So all these bids came in, um, over the budgeted amount. So. I reached out to the lowest bidder and asked him to relook at the bid. And, uh, without disclosing where we wanted to be in the budget number, I asked him and our engineer that we hired for this. Uh, what we could do to bring the cost down more. So, um, in my notes, I put down the way that, um, they reduced the cost was. By reducing the amount of porous pavement, um, in the parking lot sections to only one row of parking. Which is towards the back, which is the root four side. And also, um, reduce the pavement thickness from three and, uh, from four inches in the spec to three inches. Now, three inches of pavement is perfectly acceptable and what we're trying to do as just a general parking lot. Um, four inches is recommended for roadways and very active parking lots like shopping centers. So, um, three inches is, is certainly, um, um, approved and recommended and. Appropriate for a high school parking lot. And so that's how we got the bid down.
And what, what does installation of under drainage mean?
Um, so it's almost, uh, think of like a perimeter drain. There's a perforated pipe that runs underneath a, um, a parking lot and this is kind of new in recent years. And, uh, basically from what I found out from site folks and the reason why pavement cracks. And heaves so much is because of moisture and water trapped underneath the surface. So if there's, um, under, under drainage applied in this, in this situations to roadways and parking lots, it will, um. Definitely make the longevity of the parking lot last a lot longer.
And the, the, the signal that you're proposing for pedestrians crossing co-drive. Um, is that gonna be something that flashes on a schedule continuously or is that a pedestrian-operated device?
It's a pedestrian-operated device. It's solar and, um, from what I've heard, it's. Uh, very similar or exactly the same as what's, what's in, um, Summersworth. Where the pedestrian, as soon as they press the button, it signals the, the light. And, uh, but it, it's not active at any other time of day.
Is that like Newmarket, Jim?
Yeah, yeah, Newmarket. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to say, I think I said Summersworth. But, you're right.
Should we vote on this? I don't think we have a motion yet, do we? Denise?
A motion, um, I'll, I'll make a motion to accept, uh, Jason McKenna and Sons as the, as the, uh, bid for the parking lot.
You should put the dollar figure in.
Uh, for, uh, $285,352.85.
Move by Denise, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Brian. Further questions for Jim? Hearing none, um, roll call. Denise Day?
Yes.
Alan Howland?
Yeah.
Dan Klein?
Yes.
Brian Sisteros?
Yes.
Kenneth Rotner?
Yes.
Michael Williams?
Yes.
Tom Newkirk? Yes. So that passes unanimously. I realized, I'm sorry, Jay, that I skipped over the middle school progress report, so I could, could jump back up to that. So would you like to talk about what your fourth quarter is gonna look like? Jay?
Yeah, I'm here. Thanks, Tom.
Okay, could you, could you hear my question?
Yeah, uh, uh, can you repeat it again now?
Well, just, uh, you, you're having a, a different fourth, fourth quarter. And so if you just talk about what that's gonna be, right? And I don't know whether this is something we have to vote on or, Jim, whether this is just informative.
It's really just informative. We want to make sure the board understands how the middle school is progressing because, uh, the truncated. Um, school year is, is much more problematic developmentally for the middle school. So Jay and his staff have worked on a solution. Jay, would you like to share that?
Yeah, of course. Uh, one of, one of the challenges we have. Is with our kids having, uh, UA classes, Unified Arts or Exploratory Classes. Those are spaced out 45 days apart, so we have to end third quarter to transition kids to new learning experiences. So today was the start of Q4. So for example, like my eighth grade art teacher. Has a new group of students, uh, where they're providing remote learning, um, art activities. As well as STEM, et cetera. Um, the same thing with our PE staff. You know, they're, they haven't seen the kids since March 13th, though. The good news is we do have 70% of our kids participating in remote learning with PE. Uh, I just got that information today from my PE staff. So that's why we need to make a transition. What I've asked my core content teachers to do. Is LA, Science, Social Studies, et cetera, and including World Language. Is I've asked them to comment to parents and students in terms of how our students are currently doing with remote learning. And we will provide a summative report at the very end of the year. With our competencies and habits, our learning, uh, using our current grading scale. Does that make sense?
So you'll use the competency grading scale to end the school year as opposed and give them a progress report now?
Correct. Uh, though it is important to note that our teachers are working very hard and are putting things in power school currently. So they, uh, teachers and students, uh, in the chorus, parents, our teachers are providing feedback and. Students and parents are receiving feedback in terms of how things are currently going. Does that make sense? Any questions about that or?
Just curious about time. Narrative reports are time-consuming. How, how are you gonna like build in the time to get those done?
Yeah, no, it's a great question, Tom. I mean, what I've been emphasizing with my staff is to be brief. Uh, you know, a few sentences, you know, Jay's doing a good job, working hard, uh, anything I can do to be supportive. Um, I see Jay might be having some challenges with remote learning. Is there something I can do to be supportive? And, you know, the teams work closely together to collaborate about how the kids are, you know, doing currently. So again, when I say a, a narrative, it's not something that you think about in terms of like an elementary report or something that's very, very thorough. It's just giving a brief snapshot, Tom, in terms of, you know, a couple sentences in terms of how the kids are currently doing.
Questions for Jay?
The last thing I would add, Tom, too, just real quick, is that, uh, this is something in meeting with my teachers several days ago. Uh, you know, a group of about a dozen teachers, Todd, Alan and I, and, uh, met with them. And this is something that they felt would be. You know, best meet the needs of what, uh, students and parents need. So this is, isn't something I came up with. It was, uh, getting insight from teachers. They thought it was manageable.
Other questions for Jay? Okay, thanks, thanks, Jay.
All right, thanks.
Um, moving back down to the E-Rate Internet Bid. Josh, is that his or?
No, I'm gonna cover this for Josh because he's backing up Alex. Um, so, uh, the. The bidder that we would choose is UNH. UNH has been a provider, actually since I've been here. They've done an incredible job. They're right at Josh's fingertips. They're quick to support his needs. Um, and in fact, they've continuously increased our, um. Bandwidth and, and at, at very reasonable costs. So we would recommend UNH as a favorite bidder here, even though they're not the low bidder. Um, they're, they're our favorite bidder. And they're not, they're only, I think they're the second lowest as not, as opposed to the lowest. Uh, the additional is a $10,000 estimate on moving our, um. Cableing and service from the current middle school down to the service building. Uh, we would apply for E-Rate money for that, which we could get about 40%. And then we would charge the additional, uh, the, uh, 6,000 left to the project. So that's what that is there for, just to let, let us talk to you about that. So. UNH has been an awesome provider and we don't want to lose them. And so Josh is very committed to, uh, work, continuing to work with them and we recommend UNH for your consideration.
So we're approving the, uh, $1,100. Bid and the 10,000?
No, just the $1,100 bid because we're gonna, he put that there for me to remind you that he was gonna apply for E-Rate money to lower that cost, uh, to the project.
So would that come back to us another time?
Uh, there's, uh, no, it's part of the E-Rate application, Tom.
That cost could be there regardless of which carrier provided the.
Exactly. Yep.
Okay.
Thank you, Michael.
Could I have a motion to approve the UNH bid?
I'll make a motion to approve the UNH bid for $1,100.
Move by Brian, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Denise. Further questions on this? Hearing none, um, you vote. Denise Day?
Yes.
Al Howland? Dan Klein?
Yes.
Brian Sisteros?
Yes.
Kenneth Rotner?
Yes.
Michael Williams?
Yes.
Tom Newkirk? Yes, that's unanimous. The bid is, uh, the UNH bid is approved.
Thank you.
Okay, um. We have in the backup a draft of a charge to the, um. To the, the new, uh, Board Finance Committee. Um, so I just put that before it because I, I think that we've, we've talked about how complex the, um. Budget is gonna be and we should get to work right on it and that, that we should create a budget. Finance committee to begin dealing with, uh, creation, creation of the budget that could get to work right away. So, uh, I don't know if there's questions about the charge, uh. Later on, I'll, I'll have assignments. I'll, you know, I have people that I'd like to suggest be on this committee, but for now. I'd just like to have the charge of, we discussed Denise.
Um, I would like to make a suggestion that we add to the charge. Uh, third bullet and, uh, that it says, in order to support transparency in the process. The committee will keep detailed minutes and provide those minutes to the board.
I think that's a good, a good suggestion. And, I mean, similar to what you, you do with the, um, Policy Committee.
Exactly, because we provide minutes for Policy Committee so that. The rest of the board understands the discussion behind the decision.
Yeah. I would see that as a good, good suggestion. And I would take that as a friendly, you know, you know, a friendly addition to the, uh, charge. Other questions about the charge?
So, so that, that would, uh, that doesn't really fit as a bullet point, I don't think. So that, that would, uh, that doesn't really fit as a bullet point, I don't think. I think it fits better before, the last sentence, before the bullet point. So, because the, the bullet points are what are kind of the goal.
Okay, that's, that's fine. I, yeah, that would be fine to put it at the, uh, after the aim will be to help the full school, school board to, well, so before that last sentence, okay, yeah, okay.
Could you read, could you read it how, sorry? Could you read, Michael, how you'd like to have it?
Uh, so, starting in the middle, um, it will regularly solicit questions from the entire board and it will report on its findings in timely manner. And then in, right there, insert what Denise said about, um, keeping detailed minutes and reporting out to the full board. And then continuing on with the aim will be to help the full board develop the two bullet points.
And I, I previously actually, um, sent Wendy the exact wording so she would have it and be able to, um, to note it. But I can read it again if people would like me to.
I would, because I'm just trying to see how it fits in there, okay?
Sure, it says, um, "In order to support transparency in the process, the committee will keep detailed minutes and provide those minutes to the board."
Correct, it is a sentence right after timely manner, right?
Yep.
I think that's, that's good, put it right there. So ready to vote on this, this charge to the Finance, uh, Board Finance Committee?
There's no, there's no motion yet.
Yeah, sorry, could I have a motion to approve this charge?
Make a motion to approve the charge for the Board Finance Committee.
Moved by Brian, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Michael. Further discussion about this?
I, I think that one of the things we heard, uh, a lot in, uh, just before the, the vote in March on the middle school were questions about, well, what is the impact of the bond in the, in the long run? Not just this year, not just next year, but, but in the, in a couple of years beyond that. And so, um, it's not necessarily outside the charge, but I think it would be productive for this group to look at a framework for, uh, you know, budget goals or a budget roadmap for not just the following fiscal year, but maybe say the five years after that.
I guess my feeling was, yeah, I, I thought the focus should be primarily, should be on this year. I think there's plenty of work to do with this, this year. And, uh, uh, so I guess my, my inclination was not to extend it to create, to look that far down the road.
It's, it's already a pretty big feat to do the one year. If you want to, that means you really have to budget out three, four years. And that's, that's really a big feat. Uh, but this looks like it's a one-year charge. So you're gonna have your hands full already for that year.
Um, I think that it's gonna be, I, I, in terms of, uh, moving forward, particularly with what's gonna be probably catastrophic changes in local and state revenue, I think it's gonna have a really dramatic impact on the, uh, the capital improvement plan that you laid out multi-year. And so I tend to agree with Michael that we need to look at what that's gonna look like. Uh, whether it's laid in stone, I don't know. But I think that should come forward because it's gonna be a big part of this.
It seems to me to be a pretty big charge then for this committee. Denise?
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm understanding it as, uh, as for this year to look at what needs to happen this year. Obviously, yes, I agree that it has implications for, um, capital improvement down the road. But I, I see this as the focus really being on how are we going to meet, you know, a, a reasonable budget, build a reasonable budget under this really challenging time. And so that's my, I think we should just keep the charge as that. And understanding that obviously, yes, it will have implications. But we, again, you know, the, the idea behind this is not to take away from the entire board talking about budget and reviewing budget, but as a way of help, having a subcommittee kind of focus on some of the immediate issues and how to address those issues.
You also have in the bottom of the charge, it says, "Unless continued by the board, the March twenty twenty-one organizational meeting, it will cease to exist." So we could always decide next year to extend it out and take, go down that route that you were, that Michael and Al were, were discussing. But, you know, it's quite, unless you're meeting every week, you know, this isn't as easy as it sounds. It's building a budget with the business administrator and the superintendent is an extremely time-consuming process, especially when a lot of the things that are coming for revenue and other things, and even some expenses are not known for a while. So it's very difficult to, to, um, to go through this process and to think ahead another two or three years. It's not impossible, but I mean, it's not the, it's not the, I think the point of the charge. Also, it's a lot more difficult than I think you give it credit for. So especially considering the mitigating circumstances that are involved in the budget.
Um, just to follow up with, with Denise said, um, I would express some concern that if the, um, tasking of the committee is overly broad, we run the risk of, again, having a portion of the board being on an inside and a portion of the board being on the outside. It happened before on the board when you all were, um, negotiating with Barrington and the other, um, schools. There were people who were just involved and people who really had no information. And I think things like the budget, that's really one of the biggest things we do as a board. And when you're designating a group to have such a broad task and you're designating a, a portion of this board to do that, I, I, and it's been one of my concerns all along about the way our boards have been operating, is that I feel that we're very cleaved. And I see that this giving a broad task is gonna add to that cleavage. Um, so I, I just offer that, um, I wouldn't call it a warning, but that reticence about making something broad.
Making it broader than, than it already is?
Well, I, I mean, I just want to clarify what I was saying. I think, you know, when we've done the budget, uh, each year, you, you, you make changes to the capital improvement plan and you show what that looks like, uh, a couple of years out. Of course, nothing is ever written stone because each budget has to be approved each year. But I think, uh, the, the board is gonna wanna know, and if we begin to shift things around in the capital improvement plan, what does that look like multi-year out? It, it, it doesn't, uh, hold you to that, but I certainly think it'll inform your decision. So I don't think it's as, I don't think it's as, um, uh, you know, um, I don't quite know the term, but it's like, but I don't, I think it's something you're gonna wanna see. Uh, if we actually ask, uh, us to have detailed miniature, to have detailed minutes with this committee, I think it's, it, it's a natural discussion that's gonna occur that you're gonna see. So I, I don't see it as a big deal.
I think, I think, I, I guess I, I think that if you make the, if you have to make decisions on capital improvement this year and how that might implicate future, future, futures, I could see maybe some of that question. I think that's a little bit different than really anticipating, you know, budgets two, five years down the road. That seems to be a much bigger thing. So I, I think what you're saying is maybe, you know, could, might, might be able to fit into this charge as it exists.
Yeah.
You make a decision, you know, that you're gonna like put off the tennis court. You're like, what is that, what are you gonna do if you're gonna, that, that would be a decision that, you know, that, I think that would fit into this charge. But I think you got to say, you're gonna like create, you know, anticipate budgets two, five years down there. That seems to be much bigger than that. So I think you're saying could fit into this, Al.
Um, Michael, your initial suggestion was not to amend the charge, correct? You were just sort of floating an idea of process and scope, correct?
Um, I guess if there was general agreement, I think it would be good to amend the charge. But I didn't, I didn't formally propose that.
Okay.
When I talk about a, uh, you know, a framework, I think the idea there is we have some things that we know. We have a long-term, now a longer-term contract with the Teachers Guild, which is fantastic planning tool. We know what, or we will know by the August timeframe, what our, uh, what our bond payments are gonna look like on the middle school. Um, so we have a lot of the inputs that we would need to kind of get a sense of, well, how, how do, where do additional expenditures fit in the, in capital or in terms of staffing changes that we wanna make down the road, like adding, uh, additional World Language staff? Yeah, if we don't have some sort of long-term budget planning, uh, to a certain extent, the strategic plan is, is a wish list.
Do you feel that the card, that the charge as currently amended in any way restricts the committee from addressing some of those issues as they arise?
No, I don't think it prevents that, I, I.
I don't either.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I mean, I'm, I'm fine with the version as currently amended. Um, because I don't think, because I think you make valid points, you and Al. And, but I don't think the charge ties your hands in any way from bringing to the board any concerns about future planning.
Mm-hmm. But let's not also lose track that this upcoming budget year, the next budget year, is going to be the most difficult budget year in the next five years. So our focus needs to be primarily on this budget, getting it done. And that should hopefully send us on a good trajectory for the next three. So I see what you're saying as far as setting up for future years. But I don't wanna look, I don't wanna look too far ahead and not forget what's in front of us, which is the primary function of this board, of this, uh, committee, I'm sorry, um, is to work on that budget for next year, which is gonna be extremely, and everyone said this on the board, on the board, it's gonna be extremely difficult budget to manage. And I'd like to get that budget under control before we start taking those next steps, um, forward on the next, uh, fiscal year versus FY twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-two.
So do we have a motion to, I'm sorry, I've lost track. Did we have a motion to approve the, um, the charge with Denise's addition?
Yeah, I mean, a second for me.
Okay, uh, and that includes Denise's addition, right? Right? You, the sentence?
I, I thought so, yeah.
I believe it does, yeah.
Okay, um, so are we ready to vote on this?
Yep.
Denise Day?
Yes.
Al Howland?
Yes.
Dan Klein?
Yes.
Brian Sisneros?
Yes.
Kenneth Rotner?
Yes.
Michael Williams?
Yes.
Thomas Newkirk, yes. Um, so the charge is approved with the sentence addition from Denise. Okay, so Jim, you wanted to talk about retirement incentives?
I did, um, and I'm, I apologize to the board because normally when we put things to bed, they're to bed and we don't bring them back. And, and then, so I respectfully am bringing this back. I agreed with the board when we decided not to offer, um, the, the three retirement incentives that are allowed under the Guild contract. Uh, but, uh, just based on our previous conversation about how tight next year is going to be, I would like the board to reconsider and, 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 uh, allow me to offer, uh, three retirement incentives, uh, that would be impactful on, on our, uh, budget as of July first. So that's what I would like to put out there for your consideration.
Could you say, could you say more about why you think it would be useful for us?
Yeah, I mean, it kind of goes down the Michael and Brian and Al conversation just a few seconds ago. Um, I am incredibly nervous about, um, revenue collection, um, at the state and tax collection at the local level. And, you know, votes have been taken and so forth and so on. But I, I worked in Portland, Maine, when the governor decided that the revenue shortfall was so significant that he, um, decided to curtail state funding, uh, to the school systems across the state in October. Um, I'm not saying that Governor Sununu would do that, but I just lived through a time when, um, revenue shotfalls caused very, very hard decisions at the state and local level. And I've lived through that a couple of times in my career. That's what happens when you get old. A lot of this stuff comes back and informs your, you know, informs you as you move forward. Um, so, you know, just having, um, a little bit of wiggle room going into next year, um, could prove beneficial, um, as we, um, see what happens as a result of this COVID nineteen imposed. They're not using the word recession, but at some point, I'm sure they will be using it. Uh, revenues across, uh, you know, you take about, you think about the hotel and restaurant industry in New Hampshire and it's been decimated. That means tax, taxes have been decimated. And, um, so I think a, a, a retirement incentive could provide a tiny buffer in what could be a very draconian budget year for us.
It seems to me there's not too many ways in which we can affect the budget for this coming year, which is pretty much set. But this would be one way we could, you know, maybe reduce it by sixty thousand, which could be sixty thousand that could be sent back to the taxpayers, the tax relief or, you know, and then that, that reduction would carry over into the next year because you'd be hiring teachers at the lower level. So, uh, it would seem to me one way of, of kind of working on the budget, getting a jumpstart on kind of the kind of decisions we're gonna have to make about creating a tighter budget. So I, I would, I would think it makes sense to do this. And you have certainly, I mean, three people who'd be willing to do it, right? Don't you think, Jim?
Yeah, we, the Guild did a survey when we were talking about this several months ago. And, uh, they had, uh, I think it was seventeen people on the list who expressed interest in retiring. And, uh, if there were an incentive. And so I'm pretty confident that, um, there's three people on that list that would, uh, jump on this if it was offered.
Jim, what would the projected, um, actual savings be minus the incentive costs?
Well, I mean, it would probably be twenty thousand dollars per person because you're gonna do the buyout and, um, assuming that, you know, a hundred thousand dollar person is replaced by a sixty thousand or seventy thousand dollar person, um, inclusive of benefits and retirement and all of that. But a senior staff member right now is, is, um, at the top of the scale is, is a little bit more than a hundred thousand dollars when we include health insurance and retirement.
We probably can't the incentive out of this question, right?
Uh, that would be a question that I would ask Sue. Um, I would be hopeful that we could, and I think we can. But I didn't ask her that question before I came into tonight's meeting.
One of the things that came to mind for me is, God forbid, but there is still a chance that we will have to extend this remote learning, um, in the fall. Let's say the, uh, virus spread reemerges. That's not an ideal time to bring in new teachers. That's a time when the value of experienced teachers, uh, really comes to bear. So, um, this isn't a norm, this is, this has the potential to be a really abnormal scenario. I hope, I certainly hope that doesn't happen. But, uh, something to think about for sure.
Well, I think, Dan, that you're right on. I mean, we were talking with the commissioner on Wednesday and he raised the issue of the potential of the COVID nineteen, uh, virus reemerging in the fall and having to go into a, uh, remote learning experience. And that might even happen regionally, uh, you know, if the outbreak is in the southeast, um, they might shut down the southeast schools while, you know, the, uh, resurgence diminishes. Or it could be south central, it could be southwest, you know, different parts of the state as opposed to the whole state. Um, that, that's, um, we, that's a real, that's a real possibility, Dan. Just, uh, as a reminder that the three retirements would be spread over, um, you know, four schools and two hundred staff. So its immediate impact, as you articulated, Dan, could be very real for that one classroom. But there'll be plenty of veterans who've gone through this that could support somebody.
And, you know, if the teachers are caught in another school, they might have gone through it themselves.
True.
They, you know, they've been teaching, they've, they've done.
Tom, in terms of your questions, Sue Caswell just texted me. She said we could pay it out of this year.
I guess is they're interested in going? I guess, is there interested in going forward with the retirement incentives? Well, I'd like to move it, so I would like to move that we go forward, you know, according to the contract with three retirement incentives that will be offered this year. So I'll make that motion. For a second?
I'll second.
Just one final thought. You know, I I've, over the years, I've talked about how, you know, one of my underlying concerns, this is a useful tool, first of all, I acknowledge that, and something that, you know, I think we likely will need to turn to in the next budget cycle, given the challenges that lie ahead with that. One of the hopes I've had is that we'll, we could move away from the high frequency of of utilizing this. So, you know, I felt some degree of relief that we, at the last time we talked about it, we decided we weren't going to use it. So I'm, I'm not that comfortable with it, just given a lot of the unknowns, and and especially what lies ahead in terms of budgeting. But that's just, those are just my thoughts.
I'm I I agree with what Dan said, that this is a tool that we don't want to use every year. I'm also not sure if it is to the taxpayers' advantage or the district's advantage for their incentive to be paid this year or not. If it's not paid this year, if we do this and their incentive is not paid this year, then that means the fund balance is larger. And that gives us a tool that we can choose to apply either in August or September, either to tax relief or to next year's budget. So, or to a reserve fund. So we may actually have more flexibility if we don't pay it this year. I don't know if that's a choice either, but.
There is a contractual obligation to pay it within a certain timeline, Michael, but I believe it can cross into the new budget year.
Kenny?
Do you foresee any challenges in hiring to fill positions as well? If we're still on lockdown, and it means you lose that opportunity to be in a room with somebody and really see how they interact, as we're making that choice, a very crucial choice in hiring faculty that are usually around a long time. It would be a different process.
Yeah, I think, Kenny, you hit on a very important point. I think that in the immediate future, we're going to be doing remote interviews, much like we're in this remote meeting. And, you know, if we do it this late in the year, the opportunity to do a building visit, because everybody's in remote, you know, in remote learning is is gone. So I think that this environment is is definitely going to be a remote interview kind of environment. In terms of applicants, I don't anticipate we'll have any shortage of applicants. But in terms of the process, it would change dramatically.
Ready to vote? Denise Day?
Yes.
Al Howland?
No.
Dan Klein?
No.
Francis Narrows?
Yes.
Kenneth Rotner?
No.
Michael Williams?
No.
And Tom Nuker? Yes. So it fails three to four. Committee assignments? I don't know. I believe, did you guys get all the current, the new proposed assignments that was sent to you today? Did y'all get those? Okay.
Yep.
Yes.
I'd just like to run through those. And I have a couple, you know, there's some switches around from this year. So policy, Dan, Kenny, and Denise. Finance, Brian, Al, and Michael. Agenda, myself and Michael. Negotiation, I wondered, this is something where I wonder whether we absolutely need three people on the negotiating team. I don't know how you feel, Jim, but it's, you know, I wonder whether we absolutely need three or whether we could go down to two.
I think we could do two, because the most important part is that the board is at the table.
Okay.
Can I just ask which, what, which union is it this year?
OBD and ORPASS. So the bus drivers and the pairs.
Okay.
Okay. So I'm thinking if we could get down to two, whether it could be me and Al. District Tech, which is Brian, I don't know that's that met at all, but, you know, New Hampshire School Board delegate. And I also think kind of a liaison, or just, you know, somebody to keep an ear with what's going on with the legislature, Dan, to do that, something similar to what I did last year. Wellness, I'm not sure. I think Al, you, Al, were you on that wellness?
I was on wellness, but I have a lot of heavy commitments on the town side. So I would prefer to pass wellness on to somebody else.
Okay. Would you like to stand sustainability?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, COVID has worn off all of where we were in sustainability, but the the issue still resides. And I think it's important because you have, in a first within that committee, there's a bunch of town people. So hopefully, in the fall, we can begin to revisit what are going to be significant budget problems in terms of solid waste.
Okay. Long-range planning, Denise, but we also need to get a chair for that, right? Did you, you find out about?
Yes. So Lisa Allison's house is for sale. But obviously, at this time, houses aren't selling real easily. I did reach out to one other individual who is currently on the long-range planning. That individual would prefer not to be the chair. So, yeah, we basically, the committee is still, you know, looking for, looking for a new chair. We also have a couple of openings. And there was one person who expressed interest, and I did reach out to that person to see if they are in fact interested in being on the committee. So it definitely is in flux right now. But, you know, I will continue to kind of pursue and see, see if we can get somebody particularly to be chair.
Yeah. Okay. Middle school planning, Brian, and I will continue on that to that of committee, Kenny. So we need somebody for wellness. Like, how, that meets fairly and frequently, right? What's, what's, what's that like, Al?
I mean, technically, I thought it was, it only meets four times a year. It's, it has, it has split up into smaller groups. And I think really, for wellness to be effective, it has to meet more frequently. If you meet four times a year, the commitment, and I don't think you're really going to get anything done. I think it was pretty obvious with the, and all that, I mean, that would be helpful. But it couldn't be done in a timely manner, because it's not a priority. So I think in terms of wellness, you really need to think of where you want to go with the committee.
I don't think we've had a charge for that committee, or whether it's our place to have a charge for it. But I don't think we've been really kind of linked very closely with that committee. I mean,
Yeah, it's a school-based committee as opposed to a board committee. And the board's representative is there to contribute like Al did. But it's a school-based committee, not a board committee.
If I was to put it anywhere, the one place that I think it would be more important to have a group sitting in, mental health, or off of the wellness committee, it's been for years a priority of the board, and it's separated from the board as a committee. So I think if you're going to sit in on anything, that's the place that the board members should sit in.
When, when does mental, when does the mental health committee meet?
Well, they, they don't have, you know, they, currently, they're not meeting. But when they do meet, they agree collectively as to what, when they're going to meet. They, there's no set pattern by me, it's set by the committee.
Is it usually, is it typically, though, during school day or after school or?
Yeah, it's during the school day, because it's vastly made up of of faculty.
Okay, yeah.
So I guess we'll just leave that. We can't solve that tonight. I think, I guess what I'd like to do is to have a motion to approve the, all the other assignments that I've made, if that's agreeable to people. Denise?
I'll make a motion to accept the committee assignments as proposed.
Move by Denise, is her second?
Second.
By Michael. Okay. Further discussion? So we'll just, we'll fill all this later then. So Denise Day?
Yes.
Al Howland?
Yes.
Dan Klein?
Yes.
Francis Narrows?
Yes.
Kenneth Rotner?
Yes.
Michael Williams?
Yes.
Thomas Nuker? Yes. So the committees are approved as such as out of them. Trying to think what.
Tom, did you make appointments to the finance committee? You did the charge, did you?
Yeah. Finance is Brian, Al, and Michael.
Okay, thank you.
Are we, are we including those appointments in the motion?
Yeah.
They were listed, they were listed on the, on the proposed email. So, yeah, my understanding was they were
Yeah, yeah, they weren't, they weren't on the, Wendy said, but they're, you know, I think I read them out, and they're in the, and I saw. You catch that? So we have like a motion to approve the administrator, there's like a set of contracts that are, we need to approve. So motion to approve the administrator, ORAA, director contracts that's submitted by the superintendent. I don't know if you want to do that as a group, whether you want to separate those out. What's, what's your pleasure on that? Denise?
I'll make a motion to accept it as a, as a group as proposed.
Move by Denise, is her second?
I'll second.
By Brian. Discussion about those, those contracts? Hearing them? Denise Day?
Yes.
Al Howland?
Yes.
Dan Klein?
Yes.
Francis Narrows?
Yes.
Kenneth Rotner?
Yes.
Michael Williams?
Yes.
Thomas Nuker? Yes, those are approved. And then we had the superintendent's contract. So clear motion to approve the 2021 superintendent's contract?
Make a motion to approve the superintendent's 2020, 2021 district contract.
Bye, Brian, is there a second?
I will second it. It is, but I, I guess the question is, are we also including the proposal to move half the increase to the assistant superintendent? Is that, I just want to clarify that that is included in the motion?
I think, I think that that amount was included in, in, wasn't there, was, was that amount included in the?
It was included in the last motion.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. So it was already included. Sorry. Okay.
I was not aware of that in the last
I was not either.
That was, that wasn't brought up. So that really, I mean, again, I don't think that, that should have been explained in the last motion, because that would have impacted my vote. I thought we were waiting to this point to explain that.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So I think that to be, that should be approved. Whether we transfer that money, we, it has to be clarified, and that's made in a motion.
So could we assume that the previous motion, so you have the assistant, you have the, the assistant superintendent and the superintendent's contract, should we, should we visit those separately?
Yeah, please.
Okay. So, so we'll move forward with this, with the agreement that, that, that in the last motion, all but the assistant superintendent's contract are approved, and we're going to consider that as a separate issue. Is that?
Well, we already voted, we, we already voted. So we would have to do a new vote. But maybe we should just start by having the discussion on the assistant superintendent, and then if we need to, we can go back. Because we'll have to do a whole new vote on the, on the
I, I think having a vote where you're not clear where you're, what you're voting on is always a poor vote.
I agree, but I'm just saying we would need a new vote. We can't just say, oh, no, no, we're going to, we're going to exclude that. I, I think we have to go back and do a new vote.
I'll make a motion that we go back and do a new vote, clarifying what we were voting on.
I'll second.
To reconsider, and I think we need to get two thirds of the, I have to go, so I think it's a motion to reconsider, and I think we need to get two thirds of the vote to do that. So we have a motion to reconsider the, on the previous contracts. And so, so if we get two thirds of the vote, then we'll go back and reconsider this, okay? So the roll call on that?
So could you just say again, Tom, what are we voting on?
I think we're gonna, we're gonna have to reconsider the vote.
To reconsider the previous vote? Okay.
This vote, okay?
Yeah.
Wipes that slate clean, and we're gonna start, almost start over again on that one, okay? So the motion is to reconsider the previous motion to approve the administrator, ORAA, and director contracts that's submitted by the superintendent. We, we voted in favor that, there's a motion to reconsider that, which I think would be a good thing to do. So I have a roll call vote on the vote to reconsider?
No, it hasn't been seconded yet. I think somebody needs to second it.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Wait, who was the motion, and who was the second?
Dan and Al.
Yeah, actually, I made the motion, so somebody has to second.
So I seconded Al's motion.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is to reconsider, to, to kind of go back and do a review essentially of the previous vote. Is that okay? Denise Day?
Yes.
Al Howland?
Yes.
Dan Klein?
Yes.
Francis Narrows?
Yes.
Kenneth Rotner?
Yes.
Michael Williams?
Yes.
Thomas Nuker? Yes. Okay, the, the vote to reconsider has passed. So essentially, we're back to, to, and so I think at this point, we should be explaining what, you know, Al, like what questions you have about that shift of money. Because essentially, I think the question is, Jim is taking some of the money that he would get with the 3%, and he's only taking half of that and shifting it to Todd Allen to, for an equity, Jimmy can, maybe can explain that.
Sure. So, you know, I did a analysis of salaries in our immediate area, Portsmouth and Exeter are paying significantly more than Todd's salary. And so what I suggested in my proposal is that I budgeted 3% for myself, and assuming board approval, of course, and that I would recommend that half of the increase that was put aside for my, for me, be given to Todd to try to get him to be more competitive with Portsmouth and Exeter. Portsmouth's assistant superintendent has less experience than Todd, and Exeter's has more. So this, the suggestion would put Todd closer to Portsmouth, but still not there.
Are there any questions for Jim?
So I'll just start off. Your first, my first thought is, I want to commend Dr. Morris for, for, for thinking of this. This isn't something that is proposed every day. So I, I, I take your, you know, your intent to heart, obviously. I, I think there's probably a better way to approach this, and I, I would think that should be done through the negotiations committee in discussions with the, the bargaining unit. in discussions with the, the bargaining unit. And then, maybe I saw different numbers, I did take a quick look today. We are, in terms of our super, assistant superintendent compensation, we are solidly in the top 10. I, I want to say number six in the state overall, but I, I might be wrong about that. So I didn't see a huge disparity when I looked at the Department of Education's report for the 1920 school year, but maybe I have that wrong, so I'm open to hearing more about that.
So Dan, neither my position or Todd's are part of the bargaining unit. We stand outside the bargaining unit. And I was doing a specific comparison to, to southeast school systems, Portsmouth and Exeter. I would probably guess that what you just said in terms of Todd being in the top 10 is accurate, but the range of salaries across the state is, is hugely varied. And I was feeling that Todd wasn't being fairly compensated in relation to the southeast region and particular to school systems that we often compare ourselves to. So that was where I was coming from.
Okay. One other maybe more minor point is the calculation. In the, in the memo, if I under, if I read it correctly or understood it correctly, the one and a half percent calculated out of the superintendent's compensation was then applied and calcul, and sort of described as one and a half percent addition to the assistant superintendent's increase. Those numbers aren't the same, therefore, it would be a greater increase than, what would it be, four and a half or something like that?
Yeah, that's true, that's true, Dan. So this, I, and I'm just pulling up the memo now. It, I think the Portsmouth assistant is at 139 and the Exeter is at 144. And I think my recommendation was going to bring Todd up to 135.
So I, I'm just going to jump in, I, I really appreciate, I, like what Dan said, I thought it's very generous of you to take some of your raise. I just don't think it's a really good time to do this, I honestly don't. I think, given the, the great financial uncertainty that people are facing and what the district is facing, I think a 3% raise actually is remarkably generous right now. And I think trying to go to four and a half is just a bad message, it's unfortunate. If Todd was greatly outside of, of what the state had, then I could see us doing it. That kind of, since I've been on the negotiating committee for eight years, was really what we tried to do. And I just don't think this is appropriate right now.
Denise?
I guess I would agree with that, except for the fact that Dr. Morse is, is volunteering to, to, you know, give up, you take it out of his salary. Because otherwise, I, I would agree that the timing is not good. But given that basically this is what has been budgeted, and Dr. Morse is willing to accept half of that in order to bump up the assistant superintendent, you know, I, I can definitely support that.
I would support it as well, I mean, it's already budgeted for 3%, and for someone to give up half of that for somebody else, I think is quite generous. Regardless of the time that we're in, I mean, if anything, our superintendent, the highest paid person in the district, is taking a smaller raise. So I would, I would be supportive of that. I don't think it's really hurting anybody at this particular time, but it does show the value that Todd is to the district and what he does for us.
The way it sets a precedent is the important thing.
Well, it's not setting a precedent unless we continue to do it.
And the other thing is, it, it does impact future budgets in that it establishes a higher threshold for a typical 3% increase. Arguably somewhat minimal, but it, you know, it does establish a faster rate of growth down the road. Let's put it that way.
But it also, if anything, because again, Dr. Morse being the highest paid in the district, it, it actually lowers, you know, I, I see it as, as neutral, basically, as cost neutral.
Okay.
So could I make a suggestion to the board that they move the ORAA salaries forward? Because you were agreeable, agreeable to those earlier, and just take Todd and mine separately?
I'll go ahead and make that motion.
So you take, you're just pulling.
Right, pulling tabs, right, just for the remainder of the positions. The ORAA, so I motion to approve the ORAA contract as presented.
Is that, so we're going to keep the director contracts separate then, or?
No, they're part of the, the ORAA now.
Can I make finally a moment, I would just say, move the ORAA contracts excluding Todd and Jim's contract.
Can I ask if the business administrator's contract is still included?
She is not part of ORAA, but, you know, in this motion, I would include it.
So we should indicate that then.
Okay, so that would be the ORAA, the director and the business administrator?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry Denise, could you make your motion again, that we could?
All right, so I motion to approve the ORAA director and business administrator contracts as presented for approval.
Okay, so that would be every?
Everybody except Dr. Morse and Todd.
Okay. So, so we moved to approve all those except for Dr. Morse and Todd. Okay, is that understood? Are we okay to vote on that?
I'll, I'll second it.
Second by Brian? Is there discussion on that now? Denise Day?
Yes.
Al Howland?
Yes.
Dan Klein?
Yes.
Francis Narrows?
Yes.
Dan Rotner?
Yes.
Michael Williams?
Yes.
Tom Newkirk?
Yes.
So all those are approved except for Todd and Dr. Morse. So we have a discussion about those two now, so. How should we proceed with those? Should we make a decision tonight, or should we, is something we can lay out for a meeting, or what's your pleasure?
There's no pressing reason why the board has to make a decision tonight if it wants to contemplate this until the next meeting.
If we, if we go that route, then perhaps it would be helpful to just build on the case for making the, making the change with some greater context. So maybe just getting us the, the statewide numbers, maybe the top 10, and any other context, you know, context that might be relevant to the consideration.
Glad to, Dan.
So we'll put that off till the A6 meeting, is that all right with people?
Works for me.
Yep. I think that concludes our business. Am I missing anything? No public comment, future dates is three weeks. I assume it'll be a remote meeting such as this, and thanks to Alexander for helping us do this. So I think we're ready to adjourn. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Move by Brian, is her second?
Second.
By Michael, all in favor, all right, shoot, I'm sorry. Denise Day?
Yes.
Al Howland?
Yes.
Dan Klein?
Yes.
Francis Narrows?
Yes.
Kenneth Rotner?
Yes.
Michael Williams?
Yes.
Tom Newkirk? Yes, we are adjourned. Thank you all for being part of this.
Thank you, everyone. Have a pleasant night.